Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Education. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Just a reminder, no one may approach the dais at any point during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Oversight hearing on remote learning failures in New York City public schools. Good afternoon and welcome to today's oversight hearing on remote learning failures in New York City public schools. I'm Rita Joseph, Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you to everyone present here and to those of you who are testifying remotely. In anticipation of a major snowstorm, New York City public schools went remote for the only second time since the pandemic on Tuesday, February 13th. Despite DOE Chancellor David Banks asserting that they were more than prepared for students to shift online learning, that the DOE has taken some times as a school system to do simulation and to prepare students and teachers were confronted with service unavailable and with other error messages as they attempted to log on. Others across the city reported issues accessing essential services, including Google Classroom, Chromebooks, and Zoom, while some other teachers reported that they were struggling to even log into their emails and take attendance. Chancellor Banks blamed IBM for the issue, insisting DOE internal team checked all boxes and promised a full analysis of what went wrong. IBM released a statement the morning of February 13th stating they were working closely with DOE to address the situation as quickly as possible. In the meantime, it had been reported that while DOE alleged they ran practice tests across the system in preparation for a shift to remote learning, IBM was not involved in those tests. Additionally, it's also been reported that DOE had been without an operating, without a permanent Chief Information Officer for months. While an experienced interim CIO was in place at the time, critics contend that the lack of permanently installed CIO six months into the school year contributed to the problem. More recently, February 23rd, it was reported that Intec Khabab, if I mispronounced, forgive me, Shaquille, who served as a CEO at the City Law Department would join DOE as its CIO on February 26th. At today's hearing, I look forward to welcoming the new DOE CIO. Additionally, the committee is interested in understanding how DOE prepared to pivot to remote learning and how potential issues were overlooked in that preparation. The committee is also interested in learning how DOE will address these issues for the next time it plans to go remote, as well as any backup plan that may be put in place. I'd like to thank the committee staff as well as my own staff for all of the work they put in for today's hearing. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located to the desk of the Sergeant at Arms, near the entrance of the room, even if you're already registered in advance. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying on Zoom or in person. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses here in person will testify before those on Zoom. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues that are present, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Narcisse, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Hanif, and Councilmember Lee. Now, without any further, I'd like to turn our first witness panel, I will turn to Committee Counsel Nadia Jean-François to administer the oath.
Good afternoon. I would call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Intehab Shaquille?
Yes, I do.
Scott Strickland?
Yes.
Danielle Domingo? Zishan Anwar? Joel Placencia? Randy Asher? Kimberly Ramones? Anna Vadera? Thank you so much. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, members of the New York City Council Education Committee. My name is Intehab Shaquille. On February 26, 2024, I became the Chief Information Officer of New York City Public Schools. In this capacity, I oversee New York City Public School Division of Instructional and Information Technology, and I am responsible for application development, cybersecurity, school planning, and modernization, and infrastructure teams that serve over a million students and staff of New York City Public Schools, as well as our families. I am joined by Scott Strickland, Deputy Chief Information Officer, Strategy and Governance, Zishan Anwar, Chief Product Officer, Joel Placencia, Chief Technology Officer, and Randy Asher, Deputy CIO of School Planning, Modernization, and Partnership. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our work to support and enhance the technology needs of our students and staff, along with Remote Learning Day on February 13th. I would like to thank Chair Joseph and the Council for continuously advocating for students of New York City and funding our technology efforts. In my new role as CIO, I look forward to working closely with the Council on behalf of our school communities. Since this is my first time appearing before this committee, I would like to share a little about my background. With nearly 25 years of service to New York City agencies, including over two decades with New York City Public Schools, and recent tenure as Chief Information Officer at the City Law Department, I bring a depth and breadth of experience to the table. During my time at New York City Public School, I led development of products such as New York City Schools Account, Teach Hub, and Parent University, all aimed at enhancing the educational experience of students, families, citywide. I was in DIIT when the pandemic hit in March 2020 and led the development of systems to support student device distribution and, as students and teachers returned to schools, the daily health screening system. As CIO at the City Law Department, our prime focus was cybersecurity, and I played a pivotal role in establishing a business-driven cyber risk assessment program and strengthening agency security measures in alignment with citywide initiatives. At the heart of my vision for technology for New York City Public School is commitment to the principles outlined by the Chancellor in his vision for our public schools. We are dedicated to fostering a safe and inclusive digital environment that caters to the diverse needs of our students and staff, ensuring equitable access and support for all, regardless of their abilities, and of course prioritizing the reliable operation of a data network, data centers, enterprise systems to guarantee seamless delivery of educational services and resources. Finally, recognize that technology is not an end in itself, but a means to empower our students for success in ever-evolving world. Overall, I am eager to provide the necessary tools that will equip our students, not only in the classroom, but also in navigating the world beyond graduation. I look forward to hearing your concerns today about the Remote Learning Day on February 13th. While we understand that technological glitches are an unfortunate reality, we take this incident very seriously and are dedicated to ongoing enhancements to our systems. Now, Scott Strickland, Deputy CIO for Strategy and Governance, will share details on last month's shift to remote learning. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and members of the New York City Education Committee. My name is Scott Strickland, Deputy Chief Information Officer, Strategy and Governance for the Division of Instructional and Information Technology in New York City Public Schools. From this past fall until last week, I served as the Acting Chief Information Officer for New York City Public Schools. On behalf of Chancellor Banks, I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. In addition to CIO Intehab Shaquille, I am joined by Zishan Anwar, our Chief Product Officer, Joel Placencia, our Chief Technology Officer, and Randy Asher, our Deputy CIO for School Planning, Modernization, and Partnerships. Before I begin, I would like to thank Speaker Adams, Chair Joseph, and the entire Council for your advocacy on behalf of New York City school systems, students, and meeting their needs in a digital age. I'm here to provide testimony regarding the steps the New York City Public Schools took in preparation for the Remote Learning Day, our experiences during the first citywide Remote Learning Day since COVID on February 13th, 2024, and the actions we have taken in response to the challenges students and teachers encountered that morning. I want to emphasize our dedication to ensuring the smooth operation of our systems and services, particularly during remote learning periods. While we strive to minimize disruptions, it is important to acknowledge that we cannot guarantee that outages will not occur. However, what we can assure is our commitment to respond promptly and effectively to any issues that may arise. I know how frustrating it was for many students and families who experienced delays when logging in for class, and we are sorry we did not prevent this issue from arising. What do we do to prepare the schools to pivot to remote? This year, New York City Public Schools began preparing to pivot weeks earlier than last year in anticipation of inclement weather. Three anchor documents were developed, updated, and shared broadly across the agency. The first was our Emergency Remote Learning Plan, required by the New York City Department of Education, outlining a plan should the New York City Public Schools have to pivot to remote learning. The second was a Digital Classroom Labor Agreement, requiring all teachers to establish a digital classroom by the end of September. And third, annual updating of the principal assessment for school readiness to transition from in-person to temporary remote learning checklist on our InfoWeb page, which houses all guidance and resources for remote learning that all New York City Public Schools educators can access. Beginning in October 2023, we identified three priority areas to ensure schools would be ready to pivot to remote. First, students would have access to a working device. Second, students could log into their digital classroom. And third, teachers have a setup, have set up their digital learning environment. School Superintendent Points in each district and school directors in each borough were tasked to support schools directly with this effort. Additionally, our central offices began reviewing data on these three data points, reviewing percentages of devices assigned to students, percentage of student logins, and percent of teacher logins on New York City Public School systems. To begin, we shared preparation guidance with schools and district leaders, including a checklist that included information on these eight categories: devices for students and staff, staff and student accounts, digital learning environments, digital professional learning, student supports and related services, attendance and student outreach, budget and human resources, and school community communications. On November 27th, 2003, schools were directed to conduct a pivot to remote practice, both in in-school and at home. They were given a window of time for these practices to occur by December 8th, 2023. The exact date each district set was set by the superintendent. These expectations were communicated through system-wide email messaging to all New York City Public School superintendents. Included in this message was a letter for superintendents to share with each of their principals and a letter that principals could share with their families, the Remote Readiness Practice Plan Family Letter. The focus of the practice was to ensure students had access to a working device, had access to the Internet, and could access their digital classroom, both in school and at home. In school, teachers were to assure that students had guided practice on logging in via their New York City-provided username and passwords. Discretion was given to principals and teachers for additional digital learning activities done in the classroom. The at-home practice activity ranged from a homework assignment to an extension of the day's learning conducted at home in the digital environment. These were activities to test access to the digital classroom for the student to complete asynchronously rather than an activity of synchronous teaching and learning. By December 20th, 2023, all superintendents confirmed their districts had completed the pivot to remote practice activities. During this fall and early winter, to this day, New York City Public Schools regularly communicated and collaborated with superintendents regarding device and account access, including these five things: ensuring superintendents knew what to do about centrally distributed devices not assigned to students and student accounts with no logins, requiring schools to inventory and assign devices to students, distributing all central devices to schools that requested them, a total of 700,000 central devices from April 2020 to December 2023. Number four, helping principals gather information about home devices to ensure students' needs were known and accounted for. A total of 50,000 students indicated they had a device at home that could support remote learning. We sent clarifying messages to principals on January 3rd that they could send school devices home for a Pivot to Remote Day. Additionally, we worked within the New York Public Schools and our partners at New York City Emergency Management to improve our own internal communications and decision-making processes to ensure we could have early and clear notifications to schools and families in the case of a remote day. February 12th, the day prior to the Remote Learning Day. Once the decision was made on February 12th to pivot to remote learning, DIIT notified relevant vendors, including IBM and Nagaro, who runs our service desk, to ensure they were prepared to support the hundreds of thousands of students who would be logging in to learn, as well as our tens of thousands of teachers and central staff and support staff. We held a meeting with superintendents to announce a weather-related system-wide pivot to remote learning for the following day and to ensure districts were prepared for the transition. Superintendents were reminded to review the snow day closure guidance and to remind schools to send devices home with students who may need them. With regard to IBM, the DIIT team sent an email at 1:00 PM on February 12th indicating that the next day, February 13th, would be a remote learning day for students and that we expected an increased load for user login authentications and for them to perform active monitoring. IBM acknowledged their notification soon after receiving the email. February 13th, the Citywide Remote Learning Day. On February 13th, 2024, a large number of New York City Public School users, primarily students and teachers, were unable to log into New York City Public School systems at the beginning of the Remote Learning Day. After investigation, IBM, excuse me, DIIT determined that the issue was related to the user authentication services provided by the IBM Security Verify product that New York City Public Schools had been using for several years. Overall, the issues began and were identified by DIIT around 7:45 AM. IBM was notified at that time. IBM acknowledged receipt of our message and investigated, and immediately began to work on a resolution, as did DIIT. After several corrective actions by both IBM and DIIT, the system appeared to be stabilized mid-morning. New York City Public School systems, including the IBM system, operated without problems for the remainder of the Remote Learning Day and since. While there's no definitive data on how exactly how many students and teachers were impacted, what we do know is that over 100,000 users were able to log in before 8:00 AM, and between 15,000 and 40,000 users were able to log in every 10 minutes from 8:00 AM till 10:00 AM, totaling over 660,000 users. By the end of the day, over 1 million students, teachers, and staff were able to log into New York City Public School systems on December 13th. The root cause of the issue was that a number of, the number of NY, New York City Public Schools users logging in prior to 8:00 AM to start the Remote Learning Day exceeded the capacity of the system to handle that peak load. On the IBM side, the actions that were taken that day included increasing the capacity of New York City Public Schools authentication services, along with adding more CPU processing power to one of their services, and isolating New York City Public Schools' traffic to one server while moving all other clients to secondary servers. We also worked with IBM to turn off an alternative QR picture-based authentication option to have users use the standard username password authentication model. This option is for younger children and special needs students who operate, and was operating unpredictably under the peak load. Following this first Pivot to Remote Day, we were tasked with aggressively and accurately testing systems in the event of another system-wide pivot to remote. We know how frustrating it was for many students and families who expected, who experienced delays when logging into the class, into classes, and we are sorry we did not present this issue from occurring. What has happened since February 13th? Since February 13th, DIIT has been working with IBM to develop an immediate and a long-range plan of action to ensure that the next Remote Learning Day can avoid the problem we experienced on February 13th. The immediate-term plan includes the possibility of staggering start times on a Remote Learning Day to distribute the peak load on the IBM User Authentication Service. DIIT has also successfully completed performance load testings in its staging environment, which accesses an existing IBM pre-production authentication service provided by IBM for testing purposes. The objective of these tests was to establish measurements of the system's performance, called a performance baseline. These pre-production environment was used by DIIT as a close replica of the live production environment, but is not yet an exact replica of the New York City production environment. Longer term, both DIIT and IBM were performing automated performance tests on their test systems to identify performance improvements that could be implemented to reduce the risk of overloading the system even at New York City Public Schools' peak start-of-day volumes. In the past, while we had superintendents test in all of their districts, we did not conduct a load test where all students and staff attempted to log in at the same time. This would have been a substantial undertaking that would have disrupted school and/or families' and staff time at home. That form of testing is also not an industry standard in terms of performance testing. An industry standard is automated load testing in a non-production environment, as noted above, similar to what we do for our other systems. We are continuing to consider the best way to test all our systems going forward. As noted above, we are working with IBM to ensure we do all the automated load testing we can to ensure readiness. Once again, we regret the problems caused by the issue with this IBM system capacity. We value IBM for their rapid and effective response to the problem and for being a longstanding partner that clearly prioritizes our students and families. In conclusion, New York City Public Schools and IBM recognize that the start of the Remote Day did not go smoothly, and both teams are working together to minimize the possibility of this occurring again in the future. Our students, family, and staff deserve better. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge our public advocate, Jomani Williams, Councilmember Bura Stephens Krishna, and I'm going to turn over, before I start with my questioning, to public advocate for his testimony.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. As mentioned, my name is Jomani Williams, a public advocate of the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Joseph and the members of the Committee on Education for holding this important hearing, and for New York City Public Schools for being here. This is my opening statement. In 2020, New York City students experienced an unprecedented disruption in their learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For the first time, the city's over 1 million students had to switch to virtual learning, and while this was necessary to slow the spread of COVID, we are still feeling the effects today. The sudden dependence on technology to access school deepened education inequities already present in our schools with low-income students, students with disabilities, ELL students, and students in temporary housing are the most impacted. These disparities are not unique to NYC. A report released last year by UNESCO, the United Nations Education and Cultural Organization, found that there was a worldwide problem. The disparity between those who have access to the Internet and those who do not, known as the digital divide, existed long before the pandemic, but was laid especially bare when it determined which kids were able to go to school. First, I want to applaud the city for providing hundreds of thousands of iPads and other electronic devices to students who needed them during remote learning. The pandemic forced us to address the fact that access to the Internet and electronic devices have become an integral part of students' education, and New York City Public Schools now has a reserve of iPads and Chromebooks to distribute to students who need them. Still, many students went weeks or months without access to an electronic device or broadband connection during the pandemic, and troubleshooting technological issues are particularly difficult for families who do not speak English or have limited English proficiency. Many students did not attend school at all for long periods of time during remote learning, and chronic absenteeism has been elevated since the switch to remote learning for the 2020 to 2021 school year. The rate of chronic absenteeism was 41%, and while that number has come down, it remains above rates prior to the pandemic. This cannot be entirely attributed to the way the city handled remote learning. Many students are struggling with trauma experienced by the pandemic and the transition from being isolated in their homes. To return to school is challenging. For students who lost connection during the pandemic, it can be difficult to reengage them, but many students have been discouraged or left behind, particularly students with disabilities, who did not receive all the compensatory services to which they were entitled during virtual learning, and ELL students, who were doubly isolated both by classroom, school closures, and by language barriers. In 2020, then, Mayor de Blasio announced that students would have a virtual learning days in lieu of snow days, a policy that Mayor Eric Adams has continued due to the increased number of holidays on the school calendar. However, when the school experienced heavy snowfall last month and students were instructed to log into school at home, the system crashed, leaving many students and teachers unable to log into Zoom, Google Classroom, school email accounts, and even attendance tracking tools. Of course, it is a concern to me and many New Yorkers that prior to the snow day issues, New York City Public Schools did not have a permanent Chief Information Officer for months. While one-day loss to technical difficulties is not the end of the world, COVID has taught us that we need to be prepared to provide our students with the best possible education in any circumstances. I do want to say, I just want to say thank you again to the Chancellor, who were at least accepted that something went wrong, admitted that, and said they had to do different. I wish more people within the administration would do that. I think it would help our conversation go a long way. But even to that, I think some of the explanations are left a lot to be desired, and I'm hoping we can get some more answers to what happened during this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, public advocate. I'm going to yield my time to Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here today. I'm just going to ask all my questions, and then you all can feel free to answer. The first question is in regards to, everything is based off the statement, but I wanted to know, what is DOE's process to notify vendors of critical technology support needs? Meaning, who do you call or email, and what's the process, and what kind of acknowledgement is required for that? The second one is in regard, in regards to your statement on Page 5, when you reached out to IBM. I wanted to know, when did DOE actually communicate to IBM that there was a technical problem? And what means of communication was used, and what was said and communicated with IBM? How often does DOE have an executive level sync with IBM's executive team? And what expectations are expressed at those meetings that you have with IBM? And did IBM meet its minimal contractual obligation in terms of service on the morning of the snowstorm? Meaning, did IBM perform, or was their performance met with the contract requirements? And if so, why did the contract not have a higher level of performance? And last one, which agency owns the contract that IBM operates currently for the DOE? Thank you.
I'll try to answer as many as I can.
I know that was a lot, but just to provide some context based off your statement, which I thought was fine.
Great, thank you. So, we have regular meetings with our major vendors. We meet with IBM weekly, I think, and they were aware that this was coming. The exact communication went to them at 1:00 PM on the day before. We sent them an email. Their customer success representative, who we deal with on these kind of issues, acknowledged that. I will say that IBM has asked us to also, in the future, file a service ticket, which then gets into their help desk scenario and gets the right support people lined up. We've actually done that once or twice since. We had threatening weather a couple of weeks ago, and what they've asked for is, if we see something maybe going to happen on a Thursday, put up what they call proactive ticket in on a Monday and let us know, and then wave it down if it's not going to be a remote day. And we actually have done that. We use Slack to communicate on the morning of. They immediately looked at their systems, and they were already monitoring them and realized that a problem did exist. They were seeing load, all the allocated capacity was being used by our students and staff trying to log in, and they were seeing failures of students and staff not getting accurate responses. The contract is a citywide contract with IBM Services that is held by OTI, the Office of Technology and Innovation. What city agencies are allowed to do is purchase from that contract, and they set up a mini-bid for resellers to pick the items that we wanted to buy. This was one of the services we buy from IBM. The bid was won by a major reseller, CDW. We issue a purchase order to CDW. They provide the service and use that contract and work with IBM to, with the reseller agreement to move the money that we pay to the reseller to IBM.
And just the last part, do you feel that their performance met the requirement?
Good point. This one will get into a little bit of the weeds here. What we buy from IBM is a service called IBM Verify. What the unit of service is, is you need to buy it in 100,000-user bundles. So we buy 30 of those bundles, so we can have 3,000, excuse me, 3 million accounts on their system, each with a unique username and password that supports the logging in. In the description of that service, even though we buy a lot of it, again, supporting 3 million users, the service has indicated that it runs at 400 transactions per second. And that is what it says. Since the beginning of the school year this year, IBM has provided more than that. When the school year started, they provided 1,400 transactions per second. That was the upper limit that we could use. We consume much less than that on a normal day. But on the day that, on February 13th, we had used- But on the day that, on February 13th, we had used up all 1,400 transactions per second, still not getting everybody serviced. During the period where IBM was doing corrective action, they moved that up to 2,000, and in fact, even tried to go to 3,000. And they've left it at 2,000, and that's where it sits today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So when did the New York City Public Schools enter a contract with IBM and that specific system capacity?
It's a question.
When did you enter the contract with IBM, and what's the specific system capacity? Just to follow up on what Councilmember Lewis is saying. When did New York City Public Schools?
So we do, we do an annual purchase order. I think the city entered into the contract, I think it goes back to maybe several years. I think it started in 2018. We need to, we would need to go to OTI to get the exact duration of that contract and when it gets renewed. But we purchase these services from IBM every year through a annual renewal purchase order through the reseller.
And you stated that the capacity was at 400?
That is the stated capacity in their product catalog for that service, yes. Again, IBM had been providing us more than that in the configuration that we've been able to use. It was at 1,400 in September 2023. It was on that number at the beginning of February 13th, and as problems arose, IBM raised that to 2,000, even attempted to go higher than that as a mechanism to see if we can get more traffic through the system.
So during the time the contract was executed, did IBM caution New York City Public School that the system capacity might not be sufficient for the size of the New York City Public School system, given that we have close to a million students?
I think what IBM had seen and what we had procured was potential for up to 3 million people logging in, each having a username and password. And so I think they were making, again, I'm speaking for them, but in terms of what actually happened, they gave us something over the standard amount of TPS to support the New York City Schools' environment.
So never in a conversation did they suggest you need to expand, even though they gave you 3 million, but you said 400 is what you were using, and they expanded to 2,000. Was there ever a conversation to expand that?
I believe each year, especially recently, as we have stabilized at a certain number and with the potential for a remote learning day, they have asked to us to reevaluate whether we are procuring enough from them and what type of service we're procuring.
And when you conducted your system simulation for, for system-wide remote learning, did you ever produce a report to give to the chancellor to review?
Emma, do you want to handle that?
Thanks, Chair Joseph, and thanks to all of you for having us here today. We provided a verbal report. I don't believe we provided a written report, no, in the comprehensive, on the, on the testing we did this fall.
And during your simulation, was IBM part of that simulation?
The fall simulation is recorded, where we were working with students and teachers to make sure they had a device, could access the system, and do it at home and in school. No, IBM was not involved.
Why not?
Can I just adjust one thing on that, and you should jump in? I just want to say one thing. IBM systems were used for that, because that's the only way for folks to log into our systems. And so the IBM product was used as a part of that testing as we did it. But you can speak to what your question was around.
Yeah, we did not involve any vendors, whether it was the services we get from Google or Microsoft or IBM Zoom in the simulations. Again, it was designed to make sure that students and teachers had access and knew where to go to potentially perform asynchronous and synchronous remote learning.
So you're telling me you didn't think it was important to involve IBM in the simulation? This is a practice-and-play situation.
I think one of the things we're trying to do now is make sure we prepare as well as possible for the future, and I think both we and IBM can talk about the detailed and extensive work we are doing now. I think what I would say is, in terms of the testing this fall, all the systems we used were tested, right? So that IBM system was in use. Zoom was in use. Google Classrooms was in use. We did not proactively notify each vendor and say, "We're doing a simulation using your system on these dates between November and December." So the systems were used, but we didn't do that proactive notification of those simulations. We did proactive notification on February 12th for February 13th, but not for the simulations themselves. That's certainly something we're adjusting in terms of our practice going forward.
Moving forward, that will be, that's what you'll be using, okay. Councilmember Brewer, I'm going to let you ask your question. I know you guys got to leave, so go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. Two quick questions. In your testimony, you said something about staggered start time. So my question is, isn't it possible to have all of the students at the same time? Is that something that we could aspire to? Are we going to have to do staggered times? Because, to be honest with you, I think staggered times will be very confusing to people, and I would worry that it wouldn't work.
Very much appreciate that question. I think we would say, from an ideal perspective, we would not have staggered start times, and that is what we and IBM are working very closely to ensure is true as quickly as possible. In the meantime, because we know we need to be prepared for, it's raining out there today, although not that much, I'm told, because we know we need to be prepared at any moment in time for a transition to remote, what we and IBM have determined together and what IBM has recommended to us, is that if we have a remote learning day tomorrow, we should be working to stagger start times, which we agree is not ideal from a student and staff perspective, but it's pretty important to us that we get it right if we do need to transition tomorrow. The goal is that that would not be the case, and that we would be able to have uniform start times or the start time school one across the system.
All right. And the other quick question was, there was something, maybe I missed it, about students who are either, you know, District 79, District 75, something in here. I couldn't really understand what you said, how they were or were not impacted by all of this. They're obviously the most challenging and need the most support.
Yes. I think the mention was, we have developed a alternate way for those students to log in if needed. Normally, you put in a username and a password. What we have for those students is a username, and then the comeback is, pick the elephant or the cat.
But they couldn't use it this time, is what you're saying?
They were using it when it was determined by us, between both IBM and us, that that system was acting in a way that was potentially affecting everybody. We took that function out of the system.
Okay, so they weren't able to log on at all for this particular day? Is that what you're also saying?
No.
All right, so there's a lot to, go ahead.
Can I just try and answer the question? I appreciate the question, and I just want to acknowledge that I think all of us are aware, remote learning is not the best experience broadly, but particularly for those students, and it's especially important to get it right. They could still log in in the way everybody else could log in.
If they could.
If they could, yes. We had another, we have another way that they and younger students could potentially log in that we and IBM determined was taking up excess capacity on the morning of. So one of the ways we increased capacity was to take away that option B for some students. They still had option A.
Okay, I mean, thank you very much. I mean, in my experience from staff and others, it was really towards the end of the day that people were mostly able to log on. I know you said mid-morning, but I'm just letting you know, it got to be noon, 12:30, 1 o'clock, that's when some of them could get on. So I appreciate your honest testimony. Just an awful lot of work to be done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Chair Joseph, and thank you so much for being here. As a former first-generation New York City Public School student, whose parents really struggle to communicate with my schools, language accessibility for families is deeply important to me. Could you share how the DOE is communicating expectations or communicated expectations for families with limited English proficiency around remote learning?
Kim or Danielle, can I have you come join? Yes, absolutely. So we, we sort of, from where we sit at Central, communicated through superintendents, through principals, to families in terms of our communications, and, and Kim, can you speak to that? Kim is from our Division of School Leadership. Sorry. Thanks, Kim.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we, as, as stated, we communicate through Principal's Digest, which is, goes to all principals. We also communicate through our Superintendent's Digest, which goes to all superintendents. For parents and families, whenever we're sending messaging, we will provide templates to schools that are translated in the nine languages, and so that is the way that we try to address families who have languages other than English. So we rely on our schools, our messaging, our citywide messaging and translated forms that we do provide. We did that on the day before February 12th, and we also did that in the past when we are preparing to simulate activities.
And where is that translation done by, or who is it done by?
It is done by our, our Office of Translations within our New York City Public Schools.
And then for the families that had issues on the day of, who did they report to? Their school?
On the day of, they would have had the closest communication with their principal.
And then the, the information that's being shared out about remote learning, it's a standardized material?
That's correct.
And then, my understanding is that the DOE distributed hundreds of thousands of internet-enabled devices to students to support remote learning ahead of February 13th. How many students in the public school system still lack access to devices and internet
So I can tell you what we sort of, what we know, and then can try and, we can, we can do our best to talk through the rest. So over the past few years, and my colleagues here, including actually Shaquille, who was at New York City Public Schools at the beginning of the pandemic, can speak to this. Over the past, over the past few years, we've distributed about 700,000 devices to students in our system, and we actually, we had, we had a lot of them. I heard the public advocate mention this. We've now pushed those all out into the system. So actually, as part of preparing, as part of our preparation for remote this year, the, we pushed out all the rest of those devices to schools who requested them for the families they saw. So that's one of the things we've done, to put devices out. In addition to that, and I'm calling on Joelle to check me if this is wrong, schools have a number of their own devices, in total, over a million of their own devices, we think, that sit with school, and we think, meaning that's what we can track, that sit with schools. So in total, in our system, there's about 2 million devices between schools and families. One of the things we started doing actively this fall, which Scott referenced and which others could speak to as well, is as part of preparation to remote, we actually started doing far more aggressive. What do we know about who has devices, who doesn't? How we can push out that last small set we have centrally to make sure they're in people's hands? And then how can we make sure schools understand that they have their own over a million devices, that they might not want to send home every single day, but in the case of a pivot to remote, an emergency situation, they can send those home, right? And because we know we don't have more devices at Central, those are out, but we know schools have over a million devices, and they can send those home. So that's a piece of the work we did, working with our Division of School Leadership, our superintendents, and our principals, to say, "These are the students that have central devices. These are students who have, have said they have an at-home device. And then how can you work to ensure all the other students in your school can take home one of these devices you have in the case of an emergency situation, like a pivot to remote?" We put out guidance to principals in January, making clear that that's something they should be preparing to do in the case of a pivot to remote situation. There was a little bit of a question of whether they were allowed to do it. We said, "You are allowed to do it. In fact, you should do it. Because we are expecting you to do that, we're going to commit to you that we will let you know by 11:00 AM the day before if we are going to pivot to remote, so you have time to send those devices home."
So is it right to say, I'm sorry, that my, my time's, yeah, is it right to say that all students have a device?
Or a school could send one home in this situation?
So right now, as it, as it stands, every student, either from the DOE or the school, has a device?
In the case of an emergency situation where the school sends it home. Yes, they should.
And then on a day that's not a mandated remote day, are, are schools giving out homework that requires a student to ha, to have to do homework using a computer or a device?
Not always. Sometimes the homework might be done through manual processes, and sometimes the homework assignment could be done through a learning environment. Depends on the actual lesson of the day.
And in those instances, are the students allowed to take a device, loan a device for those assignments?
I would need to check on what schools are doing in terms of, on the day-to-day for that.
Okay. And then I know that the shift for, like, getting updates about the school for parents has also transferred over to, like, a digital interface. Is there training being done for parents by schools as standardized, so that limited English proficient families can also be able to use and understand the happenings of the school, the PTA, et cetera?
I know we have built, I had built, when I was the Chief Product Officer, four, five years ago, a solution called Parent University. So this is an important tool where parents can log in and get trainings on multiple options, including what you're talking about. I don't know the details about which program is currently being offered in this particular tool, but this is meant for exactly that purpose, as you're saying, to provide training to parents online through a portal that we had built. It's called Parent University.
And I think the one thing I would add, and forgive me if this is wrong, I think what you're referring to is our messaging application that we've made available to schools, and just, and that, that does include translation capabilities in it and preset messages with preset translations as well. Just to be clear, that's something schools can opt in to use. It's also something some schools are continuing to use, what their previous method of communication was.
Yeah, I bring this up because I know that parents who are in my community and are, are from the Bangladeshi community and speak, read, and write, Bangla have struggled with the DOE's materials that are being distributed in Bangla and are just like, this is incoherent and illegible. And so I worry about the translation being done, that from when I was in school, that was, that was not readable, to now, when we have a workforce that could be built from our communities, is still not readable, is, it's like, it's unjust. It's not okay that we're still here. And we should be striving to be able to make sure that every single parent in, in a city that has over 200 languages spoken, doesn't have to suffer through this, that every, every parent, every family that speaks another language understands what is going on in their school, particularly on a day that their kid has to go remote.
Deeply and completely agree. Wasn't aware of the issue in terms of the Bangla translation, so we, we don't have our language access, access office here. I hope they are aware. We will go back and check on that.
And finally, Chair, what, how big is the Office of Translation?
I don't have that number in front of me, but we can follow up with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Just a quick follow-up. The devices that go home to these students, are they Wi-Fi enabled?
Yes, they are. All devices are Wi-Fi enabled.
All of the devices are Wi-Fi enabled. Thank you. I'd like to call on Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Dinowitz.
Thank you so much, Chair. So my question is about the attendance rates across the city in the end, right? After, after, you know, what we can, what we know now. So preliminary data showed that student attendance on Remote Learning Day was about 80.4%, which was about 7% lower than the prior day. Can you give us the final number? And you probably don't have this today, but specifically interested in the attendance rate by district, and in particular, looking at lower, the lower-income districts like District 9, which I represent in the Bronx.
Yes, we don't have the by-district data today, but we can absolutely make sure we get that to you. In terms of the final attendance, when all was said and done, so including the rolls that came in the next day, it was 82.9% for the day, with 99.6% of data accounted for. And we'll, we'll follow up with the district information.
82.9?
Nine.
82.9%. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Councilmember Dinowitz, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Your, can you, I think you said it earlier, your contract with IBM began when?
So the contract legal document between a city entity and IBM is with OTI. They have a master contract. We purchase, DOE purchases services from that contract every year. So we repurchase.
So going back to, to what year have you purchased services?
At least going back to 2018, probably, much At least going back to 2018, probably much before that also.
And the 400 users per second login, was that the number in place in 2018?
I don't exactly know what the, what the item number spec was at that time. I, I would, I would strong, I would assume it was that same number, 400 TPS transactions per second. It may take two or three IBM transactions to actually complete a successful user login.
Right, right. But the 400 u, transactions per second number that we have today, is the same one that's in place since 2018, is what you're saying? You're assuming it's the same?
Yes.
Okay. So since 2018, there have been a number of things that have changed, notably remote learning. In 2020, the entire world pivoted to remote learning. And now with the death of snow days, we are anticipating that these things will happen. So why is it the case that you are still using transactions that are similar to the numbers in 2018 and have not updated those, those numbers and your, and the, the services you're procuring?
I think that's a fair question. As we indicated this year, and especially during a peak period, we'd need much more capacity than that to be successful.
But, and based on your testimony, it appears that there have been a lot of improvements on the student-facing, the user-facing side. There was understandably so a lot of confusion in March, April of 2020, when we all pivoted to remote learning. Teachers, we, we didn't know what to do. There was little guidance. It seems that there's more guidance on that end. But it appears that there's a lot that hasn't changed on the, on the backend, on the technical side. And the 400 users per second, what, what type of day is that designed for? Who is that designed for? 400 transactions per second?
Yeah, that can also be answered by IBM. I think it's their offering for, and again, that's for a unit of 1,000, excuse me, 100,000 users. We buy 30 of those to get up to 3 million. It appears that we would need to have some mechanism to procure additional TPS for that number of users, especially when we're going to, that those numbers can be used in a peak period.
I mean, in all fairness, you're the one purchasing the product, right? So we can ask IBM other technical questions, but in terms of the New York City Public Schools, you're the ones purchasing a product. And it sounds to me like you're purchasing the wrong product or you're purchasing a product based on the needs of 2018. And the 400 trends, please.
I'll try to answer that. As Scott was mentioning, we were buying for the number of students and parents who could log in, which was about 3 million. So we were focused on that. In terms of transaction per second, this had not been a major issue for us even during the remote learning. And we did not pay enough attention to ensure that, or that it needs to be increased so that we can continue. Because it worked consistently through, during the pandemic. Now, knowing what we know and we have seen how it behaved, we will work with IBM to ensure that we procure the right quantity of transaction per seconds to ensure this does not happen again.
When, when did you announce that snow days, there would be no more snow days? When was that announced?
I don't know the date on which it was announced. I believe it was referenced that it was first announced in the previous administration, but I don't know when it was re-announced.
So it's been a, it's whatever, it's 2021. So it's been a few years. So between 2021 and 2024, there was no one in the Department of Education, in the Technology Department, no one in the entire city who kind of said, you know what? We're going to have almost a million users logging in at the same time. Perhaps the, the product we have since 2018 may not be appropriate for everyone logging in at the same time. There was, there's no one who, at the DOE, who asks those sorts of questions?
Again, we were procuring a service from IBM that was, we were paying for the service to support 300 million users. I'm not sure that either IBM or we knew exactly how it would perform if we had 2, 3, 400,000 users logging in, trying to log in in a very condensed period of time.
I, I would just, I, I don't even know how to respond to that. I mean, the, the point is, shouldn't there be someone who says, you know, it's a snow day and all schools in New York City start at around the same time? I think they're all going to log in at the same time. Shouldn't we be preparing for that possibility? But there's no one at the DOE who, who asks those sorts of questions? It could, it could be a, a, a parent who knows that all schools start at roughly the same time. That, that person doesn't exist at New York City Public Schools?
I think I'd say a few things. I think first of all, I would say, and I hope you heard, that while we are deeply regretful about what happened and are committed to working with IBM to make sure it does not happen again, we did undertake a series of work over the past few months to be as prepared as we could in as many ways as we could. We did notify our vendors that we were pivoting to remote. We and they have an understanding of what our system load is. We appreciate now that in terms of this one precise issue, we collectively need to work on what the correct transactions per second are for enough of our students to be able to log in at the same time. And then in fact, now that we are working together, it looks like for the time being at least, that needs to be staggered to ensure the systems can handle it. So that's what we are trying to do going forward. We are here and we've said that we are trying to do this better for the next time, and that's what we're doing. The one other thing I would flag, and IBM can speak to this more, not trying to kick it to them, is IBM has been providing us with more than 400 TPS for, for, in the past as well. So since the beginning of the year, we were actually above that allocation as well as last year. So we weren't actually functioning in the particular technical environment that there was. That's something regardless, we need to work on going forward together, right? And that's true. We weren't at 400. We were at 1,400 since September.
We don't know what sorts of problems will exist in the future. That's why we are counting on you to anticipate those problems and prepare for it. Again, based on your testimony, it appears that you've prepared the students and families for it. But we are counting on our city agencies, on our Department of Education, our public schools, to prepare on the backend for the things that are unforeseen, that we don't always know is going to happen. That's your job and that's what we are counting on you to do. Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate that. That's what we're here for. And I would say we can speak about this more in terms of the load testing we are doing now ourselves in our current environment. The load testing we are doing with IBM in our environment with them going forward to ensure that's exactly how prepared we are going forward. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, thank you for that. Has IBM ever recommended to increase the contract? And how much more would that cost New York City?
As we mentioned earlier, I think especially recently, they've indicated that there should be a contract change so that more capacity can be offered to the DOE on a consistent, fair basis. I would expect that may cost more money. IBM may be able to talk about what that might look like and what type of product or service they could offer, especially to handle these peak periods, which don't happen every day, but do happen at a very large level, potentially three or four times a year.
And I would say to that, I would also assume it would cost more money. The, the truth is IBM has made recommendations for, to us in terms of what they think should be in a new contract that they can speak of, because in our, our teams have not worked through the details together yet. We will, of course. But as a result of that, we don't know the precise cost of auto scaling or whatever else is.
Was this recommendation made prior to this snow day or was it done after?
The recommendation I'm speaking of was a recommendation to turn our TPS to auto scaling, which these guys can explain better than me, but is basically what it sounds like. And that's a recommendation that was made last week specifically, and we'd expect our teams to work through it together.
And auto scaling would automatically adjust to the needs as the bandwidth expands, correct?
That's, that's what we have heard, but we have to go through proper testing and validation of these before we agree on the terms of the contract and what we need. So that work is still in progress.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaker?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Joseph, for this important hearing today. And good afternoon to you all too. Thank you for your testimony. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I mean, first, just to be clear. So the contract from 2018 has stipulated at 400 transactions per second, right? That's what's currently in place right now at the DOE?
That's what the contract says, yes. IBM is providing more.
Right. And that contract is in existence, right? That continues in existence right now.
Yes.
So currently, given as Councilman Dinowitz said before, too, a global pandemic, everyone logged on. In this current moment, as we speak right now, the contract with IBM is still for 400 transactions per second.
Correct.
In other words, if there was another snow day, let's say tomorrow, or some other disaster, per the contract, it can only, IBM system with, with you all can only account for 400 logins per second.
That's what the contract number is. IBM has been provisioning more, again, 1,400 at the beginning of the year, now at 2,000. Contractually, it seems like there's a possibility they could take that down. But I think for our mutual benefit, we're going to get that number so that we.
Right. It's just very concerning that that is where the contract is right now. And I get they can do more on an ad hoc basis, but the fact that we're talking about 2018 numbers when the whole world has changed since then, and this could happen again in terms of another snow day or another, you know, day where children are home from school, it's a bit concerning that we're still at. The contractually required number is still 400. What, you may have mentioned before, I may have missed it, but on the, so the contract requires 400 transactions per second. How many logins happened that day on February 13th?
By the end of the day, over a million.
But how many happened in that morning itself when the whole system shut down?
So we have a, kind of a graph of what the successful logins were over time. Right before the, the users started getting error messages, the system actually processed 100,000 successful logins in 10 minutes. When it got overloaded, that number dropped. It never went to zero. It never crashed and stopped working. And it was anywhere between maybe 15,000 to 40,000 every 10 minutes.
Right. And so, and there were successful logins, but just overall, both successful and unsuccessful, how many logins happened in that, and I know it because I was one of the parents with my children trying to log them in, between that eight, as the chair was too, between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning? How many logins happened during that time, both successful and unsuccessful?
So we don't have the unsuccessful number because it's not recorded anywhere. We do have the successful number, 100,000, then it dropped to maybe 20 or 30,000 per 10 minutes soon after 8:00.
Right. So it's not, I mean, that number is obviously much lower than what the actual number was, given that there were many unsuccessful logins that weren't recorded. So just to, to paint it very clearly, 400 required by contract and well over 100,000 at that time, which raises a very concerning, and I get, you know, the, you all are refining and adjusting as you go along. But there is a chasm of, of, between what the contract requires and the actual login rate. And the fact that we're now in 2024 and six years after this contract went into effect, such a large chasm exists between what's on paper and what happened in reality is, is really stunning. But another question I had was since, it was right before the snow day preparation. I think Chair Joseph asked this question as well. So there was no actual consultation with IBM or snow day preparation with IBM where they were involved before the actual snow day happened?
So they were not involved in the test that we're preparing our students and staff and administrators? Their service had run fine, as well as our services from all of our other major vendors.
But why was that? Why were they not involved, given that they managed the whole system?
The objective of that test was to make sure our students and staff were prepared and could do the work. And we had not experienced difficulties, again, across the pandemic with any of our major vendors that provide these type of services, whether it's IBM or Outlook, Microsoft, Google, et cetera.
I also just want to again clarify, and I appreciate the question you're asking, and it's a good question, and it's obviously something we're adjusting going forward with all of our vendors. Their systems were involved. So their tool was involved. Their tool worked in those simulations that we did district by district, just like Zoom did, Google Classroom did as well. Right? So it's not like their systems were not involved, but we didn't do a separate notification to them. This is what we're doing. This is how we're doing this. No, that is what we are doing with them as well as more load testing. But their system was used.
Uh huh, okay. It also seems very strange that they wouldn't be involved, given that they oversee the whole system and administer it, you know, when you're talking about preparing for the snowstorm. One thing I wanted to correct was, and I, hopefully we hear more from IBM too, but I believe that their login rate reached about 3,000 per second, which is much higher than the contract amount. Just going back to my first question. But my other question was, was IBM notified at a senior level that a snow day was planned for February 13th? Who did you notify at IBM? And if so, when?
Okay, so a notification was the day before at 1:00 PM. We notified the people that we deal with on an ongoing basis, I would say at the working level. They recognized it and were ready to help if anything came up. You mentioned the 3,000. Just to be clear.
Sure.
They provided, as a corrective mechanism, as we were working on the problem that morning, went from 1,400 to 2,000. They did take it to 3,000. The system behaved unstable. It actually got worse, for whatever reasons. They took it back to a number where it stabilized and was behaving till we made some other changes.
Got it. But going back, and thank you for the clarification, but going back to the, the question I just asked. So no one at a senior level at IBM was notified about this snow day and snow day preparations?
I don't think we can answer that. We reached out to our representative. Whether they scaled it up to the senior members in their organization is for them to answer.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And we reached out and they confirmed receipt too, right? So I think, I just want to say, we did understand from them, they'd be prepared. We don't know what communications happened internally. They've asked us to adjust our own communications. We are doing that and have done it a few times since then already.
Got it. So I would just say, I mean, I think the chancellor and the public advocates had his best. The chancellor did say that this was a test and you all failed. I happen to agree with that. And I think my kids would too, actually. But the one question I'll just leave you with is that there seems to be a lot of blame or at least passing the buck to IBM and IBM system. But the contract was from 2018. IBM wasn't involved in any snow day preparation before. Doesn't seem like senior leadership at IBM were notified of a snow day by DOE before it happened. So I just think, you know, when you look at the way IBM is, sort of the buck is being passed there, I guess I would give you the example of if you have an elevator and the elevator can only hold 1,000 pounds and you put 7,000 pounds in the elevator and the elevator gets stuck, is it fair to blame the elevator company in that situation? That's all I'd ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. Hi y'all. Thank you for, for testifying. I got here a little late. So I apologize if you've already answered some of these questions. And actually, Councilmember Shaker Krishnan addressed a lot of the communication questions. My question is about, similarly about communication, I guess moving forward, since it doesn't look like the dynamics of, can you just confirm? The, the contract moving forward, will it be adjusted? Or have you found that there is no need to, to adjust the, the, the 400,000? I'm sorry, the wrong terminology, users per second?
We assume it will need to be adjusted. We do not have a final set of decisions between us and IBM on what is needed, whether it is auto scaling or some TPS amount. They made us a recommendation last week. We will work with them on the specifics of what that recommendation are and then what the costs would be associated with that. Obviously, again, the contract is with OTI, not us, but so we would need to work through them.
Right, right, right. Is there anything that you can share about what some of those suggestions have been from IBM so far?
So I would say the core one, but I, I do want to say our teams have not worked through the details of it. So I don't think any of us can answer follow-up questions. But I believe the core recommendation that was given to us last week was about auto scaling, automatically scaling as opposed to having a set TPS. But we haven't talked about the details between us and IBM yet. So we'll have to come back on that.
Okay. My next question is just regarding the, the communication, not necessarily between New York Public Schools and OTI or an IBM. I think what was very disheartening was hearing the mayor for some time in the morning essentially blame parents for the fact that their kids could not get logged on. And I distinctly remember the press conference saying that, you know, this was up to parents. And if parents were unwilling to navigate this issue, that was on them. I don't, I don't know if I'm, I don't think I'm saying it exactly, but that was, that was the tone. That was the, the chief complaint that I heard from constituents in my district. And so my question to you all is how, how do you all respond? And so my question to you all is, how, how do you all respond to that? Now knowing that the issue was, was never on the parents, right? It was authentication. What is the response? What is the, the apology from the department to parents? It was, it was really offensive. I don't know if there are folks here that will testify to that, but it was really insulting. And so would love to hear of that, if that's something the department is working on.
So we are here in part because we are really sorry about what happened for students and families that morning and doing a lot of work to try and ensure ourselves that it doesn't happen again. And the chancellor did, as was noted out, note that morning that we failed to deliver for our students and families and that we would do better.
But I'm specifically asking about the comment that this was parents' failure to navigate. That, that was what the mayor said. Is there any response to that?
On the morning of, we, I think what I'd say is we're working as hard as we can to make sure our systems are working for our students and families.
I know. I get it. That's why you're here. That's why IBM is here. That's not what my community, that's not what they want to hear from the city's leader, that it's their fault, is what I'm saying. So would love to know if there's a apology with regard to that specific statement. The last piece that I'll say, the, the last question that I'll ask, and I know this was in your testimony, is there any specific information you can give us on special needs students and their ability on the 13th to like fully get on? Is there, I don't know if you already covered that, I apologize if you did, but just curious if there was any special attention played in those instances to those students? I know there was a whole plan with superintendents, so I'm assuming there was more touch bases, but I just want to hear on the record if there was any additional efforts once you realized there was an issue with special needs students? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, yep. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here today. So one of the things that we could say is that our schools, our superintendents, principals, and teachers did a tremendous job in making sure that the needs of the students in each particular school were met. So in terms of any student, when we did our tests to make sure that students could log on, both in school and at home, any child that was having difficulty, either school leaders or teachers would reach out to the students and their families to make sure that they were ready to log on on that day.
But on the 13th, were you able to assess if that was the case, specific to special needs students, or you don't know?
No, we, we don't have that data specifically, but principals I know and teachers as well, as we were getting access, we were logging on right away. And teachers and leaders were reaching out to families that may have had issues. Each school has what's called a SPAC, which is a point of contact for families and other members of the community to reach out if they were having difficulty logging into systems.
Thank you. And I also had noticed that day that they were putting out, put in tickets for Do-Do It. How long did it take for Do It to respond to parents who had put in tickets? It was on Twitter. Do I need to pull it up?
I don't think we can respond about.
You'll get back to me on that because parents were told they can put in tickets in Do It to OTI, and they would get a response. What was the turnaround time on those tickets? Does anybody know? And you will get that to me. Thank you. How many students and teachers were impacted by the system outage?
As we've been discussing, it was not localized to any particular borough or grade level or school or anything of that nature. So all teachers and students may have had trouble logging in on a particular day.
We at New York City Public Schools don't have the data on who tried to log in and couldn't. I don't believe IBM does either, they can answer that, but we don't. What we have is the data from them on who could log in.
All those who could log in but not. Okay. And, and I know Councilmembers Sanchez had asked also, even by district, you don't have data as well, or no? Yes or no?
We will have to check on what we can get by district, but we got the question as a follow-up.
Thank you. How many staff members manage your Division of Instructional and Information Technology office at New York City Public Schools? Could you list the titles, number of full-time and part-time staff?
We had that question in advance, so we do have it. We have a leadership team of eight. I'll maybe quickly rundown. Do we have their names? I thought we did. So the R8 leaders are our Chief of Staff, the Chief Operating Officer, that handles finance and HR, CIO for Strategic Governance, myself, Chief Product Officer, Zishan, Chief Technology Officer, Joel, who's here, Chief Information Security Officer, Demond Waters, Deputy CIO for School Planning, Modernization, and Partnership, Randy Ash, who's here, and Deputy CIO for Digital Content and Services. So that's eight senior people that report directly to our CIO. We also have about 30 other director-level people that handle our infrastructure, our hosting, app development, security, things of that nature. Our total staff, full-time equivalents, is 603 at the moment.
How many vacancies are there in DIT? DIT? DIIT?
We worked on that number also. There are seven vacancies. Those are empty positions where we have authority to hire.
And were there any other vacancy reduction in this department?
In terms of vacancy reductions for our PEGs?
Yes.
The last time one of those vacancy reductions impacted DIIT was, was in January 2022. They haven't been impacted from those last few rounds.
Thank you. What's the New York City Public Schools' budget for remote learning? And is that budget within DIIT?
Yeah, we answered that question two ways. So remote learning is not a separate category of DIIT expenses. We host, we have licenses for products, our authentication, our security, et cetera. So we provide, within our budget, we have the hosting, we pay for the license for Google, enterprise for Zoom, and we built other systems around this that we paid for of our budget, Teach Hub, Parent University, et cetera. The other addition would be what schools buy for actual digital curriculum, for ELA math, social studies, language arts, that is third-party digital curriculum.
Thank you. Can you share what were some initial challenges with the remote learning software when it was first launched?
Sure. It was, as was mentioned, the first thing we needed to do, which was to pivot to remote in March for the pandemic, which came up suddenly, we wanted to make sure students had access to learning at home. That required us to procure and send devices actually to each student's home. About 300,000 went out in 90 days in that fall. In the meantime, we were making sure our students, our teachers and staff could work from home and setting up systems for that and making sure they had devices and access. And then we started building technology. We built a system called Teach Hub, which allowed everybody to log into one place and get to the curriculum and tools they're going to use. And as students came online with their devices, more and more curriculum was built on our enterprise Google platform or other learning management systems to actually allow robust synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So the challenges were going from not knowing we had to plan for that to some major procurements, distribution, and setup and operating of systems that weren't, didn't have any kind of long-range, super-long-range planning.
In terms of your current devices now, what is the warranty on those?
The warranty is a three-year warranty and a three-year useful life for an iPad or a Chromebook that we've been purchasing centrally. We do sometimes extend those warranties to five years, but for capital purposes and even ECF purposes, which was a major funding sources for a lot of our student devices, it's a three-year lifecycle.
And a lot of the schools are now coming up with testing online. Are you prepared for that?
Yes, we've been working.
Emma knows I'm gonna ask, two decades in, in, in doing this business, she knows I'm gonna ask.
We've had two briefings on that in the past week.
Yes, Emma's been very active with us to making sure, because that's again another high-stakes point of service where students are going to be taking their SATs and PSATs in school for the first time and, and also the state testing for the third graders and the eighth graders. Joel can speak a little bit maybe about the work that we've done to see how students, are those schools that will be offering those testing are set up for the in-school bandwidth and the in-school device distribution. And we do have a small number of schools that are at what we call leased sites, they're not DOE-owned buildings, which have been hard to get to, to do network upgrades. In, in some cases, we want to make sure that there's enough bandwidth and internet access points in the exact classrooms where schools are going to be offering that service where they won't have capacity problems.
Yeah, because I know last year you had an issue with testing. So I want to make sure, because the pilot program launched to test kids online, so I want to make sure that system is up and running. We saw what happened with snow days. I don't want kids coming in and not being able to take the test.
Fair enough. And there's, what we can do on our side, and then the software itself is run through, it's a, you know, provided by the state. There is a download that can happen on some of our platforms, and we're making sure that that download is done in, ahead of the testing period.
And when are you going to start practicing, doing a simulation with the testing system to make sure that there will be no glitches that day?
Joel, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Don't be scared, I don't bite.
Again, he's had, as you mentioned, two or three years' experience with this.
22 years teaching in New York City Public Schools, and I ran in all those positions. That was a SPAC in my building, so trust me, firsthand experience.
Yeah, so preparation started last year. 127 schools participated in this pilot program in getting ready for transitioning to computer-based testing. This year, there's been a couple of simulations, the most recent one happening in January, and I think there's another one. And the Office of Assessment is reaching out to the schools who are not able to complete or participate in that simulation to make sure that they have an opportunity to do so before test season begins.
And we checked all the schools, the bandwidth and, and the school systems have been expanded.
Yes.
To make sure they can support.
Yes, we took a look at, we took a look at the technology for every building, the devices, making sure that the applications that are needed to conduct these tests are installed in those applications, downloaded, working, et cetera, as well as making sure that we ran those applications through our security and compliance process. And lastly, making sure that the application's requirements for data integration, data exchange is already in place.
All right. Then y'all won't hear from, then y'all won't hear from me.
I just want to add that this morning, FDR School conducted 1,600 students on the SAT exams and the system worked flawlessly. There was no issues with the bandwidth.
Okay, thank you. So during the 2022 contract negotiated, negotiations, did IBM recommend an increase in the TPS? If so, what was their recommendation one? And does the DOE believe that the outcome on February 13 might have been different had IBM been included in the system test?
So two questions, two answers. In hindsight, certainly, I think having IBM know the number of students we have and the teachers we have, and they were all going to come in at, at around 8 o'clock, in, in real numbers, they could have done some calculations and see how their system performed. They could potentially have tested it in advance. So yes, and we are deep into that with them at this point. The other question was, sorry.
During the 2022 contract negotiations, did IBM recommend an increase in TPS? If so, what was their recommendation? That was never answered. What was the recommendation?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specifics on that. We will get back to you because I think it's an important item at this point.
You mentioned utilizing staggered start time. How would the staggered start time be distributed as borough level, district level? How many users does DOE think would be able to access the system at each staggered time?
So we are working on it. What we have assumed is that it would be by grade level, not borough level or district level. In terms of how many could access at each time, that's something we're working with IBM on. It's something they're making recommendations to us and working quickly to basically decrease the size of the window so more can log on at once. I can't remember the latest, it's basically currently would take us a bit over an hour for all, everyone to be able to log in based on their recommendations. But those are calculations they do and give to us.
For example, I know schools who do staggered dismissal, they do staggered arrival, so maybe that is something to think about in, in four. It took us half an hour to get on. I started with my eight year, my eighth grader at 8 o'clock. We didn't get on till 8:30, and that just gave me stress, reliving 2020 all over again that morning. So I wasn't the only parent. Shaker was texting me, Chair, what's going on? And I was texting everybody else and calling to make sure that they can also get on. So thank you. So how much of the OTPS budget for fiscal 2024 and 2025 and out-years are in contracts?
So the DIIT OTPS, other than personnel services, so that's everything that we spend other than our full-time staff, which we talked about. Most of it is with third parties, whether it's contracts or POs. And that requires, that's what we do, and we buy hardware or we have to pay for maintenance agreements on that hardware that goes into our hosting environments. We buy software and software licenses, so we're to IBM. We buy from Google, from Microsoft, et cetera. And there's two places that are, we spend money on contracts that are with people, the first being our service desk, where we have a outsourced vendors that handles all of our ticketing in, in response to user queries on our services. And we create project scopes that IT services firms bid on to either enhance our current systems or build brand-new systems.
So when you, when you created the simulation, right, I know I'd be able to answer that, does it ever bring red flag? Do you have a, does it give you data that maybe there is a problem? And how do you come in and adjust and fix it?
Yep, and so simulation, testing has two flavors.
Right.
When we, when we maybe simulated a remote day with our students and teachers, we were looking to see, did the students know their username and password? Could they get to assignment? Could a teacher create the assignment? And maybe see how many kids actually logged in and responded, that they got to the classroom or actually did the work? So that's a simulated remote day from an educational standpoint. The other thing is, did our systems get tested in a manner that would recognize that they functioned well? They didn't give errors, and they could handle load? And it's that last one that obviously was a problem on the morning of the 13th. So that, that work is done through what we call automated performance testing, where you work in a non-production environment and push it to the limit. And at some point, the system will keep performing well as you push higher and higher. And at some point, it starts to either slow down, max out its use of its CPU or its storage, and it either stops or has long response times to get to an answer. That second piece is what we're working on with IBM now, to say, at, if you provide a certain level of TPS, how much throughput can you get? How many users can come in? How many successful logins can you get? And then if you ratchet that capacity up, what can you get? And how far can you push till you get to the point where we got to on the 13th, where things didn't get to a successful result by every simulated user that was coming into the system?
What's, what's the timeline for all of that to happen?
So we've been working every day since the 13th. IBM has got, this is a product they offer in the cloud, so they're working on improving the performance of that product, which will obviously service us and other users of this product. We have our own test environment where we can simulate more things. We can actually see a user going to Teach Hub. Oh, you haven't logged in yet. You get interrupted, get your username and password. Now you go to Teach Hub, then you go to Google, and we're making sure that all those handoffs work and that the way our system interacts in a real user flow way gets a user from a dead start into their remote learning environment where they can do their, their instruction.
In your future simulations, are you planning to invite parents or students to be part of it?
So we'll first do that in the lab, and then we could either have them be part of a team logging in in that lab environment, which is, most typically, the transaction loads are done, again, through an automated engine that creates those transactions. So, but we, we could easily do user testing in that same environment to show that if, if we had 100 people and they all entered at the same time, they all got through.
So you're basically telling me you do have a plan, moving forward. New York City parents will not be calling us. So the next snow day, snow days and remote learning is here to stay. It's not going to go anywhere. We, just like we agreed that Zoom, Google, Teams, they're all here. They're not going to go anywhere. They're part of our lives forever. So we just have to learn to adapt and adjust and operate the system so we can meet the needs of the parents. Because you had a lot of panicking parents that morning. So I think you were going to say something, Emma?
Yes, I was going to say, in terms of testing going forward, so we're doing all the load testing, the performance testing we can, we can do with IBM. We are still thinking through whether to do a full system tense that includes all of our users or not. As was mentioned, the industry standard is, for the testing of the system itself, is to do the performance testing we're doing in the lab. And it would, it is a heavy lift and a big ask to ask all of our families and teachers to take that on. So we're thinking, we're thinking that through.
Okay, thank you. Did students with disabilities receive special education-related services to remote instruction on February thirteenth?
We could get a little more information from you, that data, but if students were able to log in, schools did have the resources for them to receive their services.
And were any service provided for PK, pre-K and 3K students on February thirteenth? What if any plans are there to serve early childhood students remotely in the future? That was a question I had asked before.
So we do know that schools were instructed to make sure that students had devices and that teachers were working with students to log on, but I can't say a hundred percent that every pre-K or child received that.
And is there a plan for pre-K and 3K in the future and early childhood centers?
Yes.
Okay. They, they want to know, they want to make sure they're included in, in the plans. Thank you very much. We're good on our questions. If any questions come up, we will email them over. Emma knows I like giving homework. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the administration for their testimony. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. And for virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first panel, Vanessa Hunt. You may begin your testimony, Vanessa.
Chair Joseph, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to appear today on a matter of great importance to all of us at IBM. My name is Vanessa Hunt. I am IBM Senior State Executive for New York, and I have worked with the city of New York in many capacities for the past seventeen years. I would like to start by underscoring that IBM is a New York-based company, and for us, the New York public school system is more than just another client. For many IBMers, New York City Public Schools is the system where our own children learn and grow. We take our work for the city's school system personally, and we recognize the special responsibility that comes with delivering technology and support of nearly one million students, their families, and their dedicated educators. The New York Department of Education uses IBM Security Verify, or ISV, as its remote login and identity management system. It allows students and teachers to securely access the department's online resources, including its remote learning platform. We understand how frustrating what happened on February thirteenth was to the school system's students, families, and educators. It would be a disservice to them not to identify the true root cause of this event, and it was not a failure of IBM technology. In fact, IBM has routinely supported this platform at levels far beyond what was designed, tested, and contracted. Our contract, which was signed in 2019, established a simultaneous use threshold of four hundred transactions per second. That's simply a gauge of how many users can log in at any given time. IBM has on multiple occasions increased the capacity of this system, far beyond the contracted levels, at no added cost to the DOE, to meet the school system's evolving needs. ISV is like a secure door into the DOE's systems. Over time, by adding more users and applications behind that door, the department was increasing the number of people trying to come through. Demand that was easily managed with four hundred transactions per second in 2019 often required a thousand transactions per second in recent years. We continue to highlight that demand growth to DOE while also supporting the system as good partners. The department's use of ISV was simply not contracted to support nearly one million students and their teachers logging in at the same time. On February thirteenth, the Department of Education had a closet door when it needed a barn door. At over two thousand transactions per second, everyone tried to rush through that door at once. Balancing the traffic over time would have resulted in a better outcome. Thanks to the strong partnership between DOE staff and IBM, the remote login issues were resolved, and the system successfully processed over a million logins that day. IBM has taken additional steps in response to what happened on February thirteenth, namely, increasing the ISV login capacity to more than five times our contracted level and keeping it there. Our team has worked hand-in-hand with the DOE to put in place short and long-term solutions to ensure that the understandable frustration students and teachers felt that day does not happen again. I'm very encouraged by the way our teams have come together over the past three weeks to learn and apply the lessons of this event. We have delivered with the DOE a detailed action plan with next steps that should be taken to ensure a seamless remote login experience, and I thank them for their partnership. Long term, we continue to recommend that the school system transition to an auto-scaling ISV solution, which can automatically throttle to meet the volume of user demand. We have shared with the DOE team that implementing this long-term plan will require updates to our contract for the school system's use of ISV. And we very much want to participate in any future snow day and remote learning drills or simulations. IBM is proud to be a New York company, and I cannot stress enough how committed we are to our partnership with New York City and the New York City Public Schools. Thank you again for this opportunity to share our perspective, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. The morning of February thirteenth, Chancellor Bank stated that New York City Public School informed IBM they should expect a nearly student, a million student login on between seven-thirty and eight AM on February thirteenth. When was IBM given this guidance? And did IBM do anything specific to prepare for the number of students and teachers expected to log on at once?
Yeah, so we did receive that email the afternoon of February twelfth. It was from somebody on the technical team at DOE to somebody at the IBM technical team. That note said that there may be a remote learning day the next day and asked us to keep an eye on the TPS the next morning.
And can you continue to explain what happened the next, the very next morning?
Yes, so that technical person from our side did put the product support team on standby, which I think ultimately helped us to recover as quickly as we did. At about eight-thirty the next morning, I received a phone call about this issue from CTO Fraser. At that point, the technical teams were already engaged and working in collaboration with the DOE to make the system stable.
By what time was the system stabilized completely?
We believe the system was stable at ten-fifteen.
We were also getting report that some, some students in part of the city was able to log in by twelve o'clock.
I understand. I will say that there are other pieces of DOE's remote learning solution that could impact problems logging in outside of the authentication. All we know from our side is that we were monitoring the system, and the transaction seems stable and successful at ten-fifteen, and I believe that DOE agrees with that.
Does IBM believe that DOE provided adequate notice of department's plan to switch to remote learning?
I think that we would both agree that, that it was not adequate, and we have plans in place now that we have agreed upon, a very strong communication plan to avoid that from happening again.
What's the turnaround time to make that happen without any hiccups?
Well, as you heard in the prior testimony, we do have short-term and long-term recommendations. At this point, the turnaround time could be quick with the action plan that we've established, but again, it would require behavioral changes such as a staggered login with the current system.
How often are IBM and New York City Public School in touch regarding the services that IBM provide for New York City Public Schools?
I can say from my own experience, I was in touch with the prior CIO, Anurag Sharma, somebody I have great respect for, very often. And we were very optimistic to see the appointment of Mr. Shaquille, who we worked very closely with the law department, and I'm confident we'll be in close touch with him as well.
And the interim acting, were you in communications with him very often as well prior to February thirteenth?
That I am not aware of. I no longer cover the New York team.
When was the last time MDOE negotiated this contract with IBM?
So the initial contract was negotiated in 2019. They have renewed it every year in July since then.
At the time, did IBM inform New York City Public School the need to change the contract for allowing more logins per second?
I can't speak to what happened around the contract renewal, as I wasn't part of those conversations. I can say we absolutely, I was part of conversations with the former CIO where we did recommend that they move to this dedicated auto-scaling instance, and I know that they were aware that they were going over the contracted value of TPS.
Has there been discussion between February thirteenth and today regarding New York, New York City Public Schools' contract with IBM? What recommendations did you, if any, does IBM have to amend the current contract with New York City Public Schools to avoid these type of situations?
So again, we've been in contact daily. It has been a very positive collaboration, but both DOE and IBM have just been focused on ensuring that we are prepared, that this does not happen again, especially in the case of an imminent snow day. So we have been working on those plans. We have not had discussions around the contract yet.
As you can see, it may not be snow days. Last year, we had the poor, poor quality, poor air quality. That day, we had remote learning on June ninth. It was a clerical day, if you remember, so kids were already out of school. What was the difference in the way IBM prepared for June ninth versus February thirteenth?
I'm not aware of the preparations that happened around that, but I will say that, as you said, given the, given the clerical day, we saw much less volume, so about two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand students were expected that day. That's a big difference for our system than a million logins at the same time. But I can get back to you, Chair Joseph, on, on what the preparations were.
And moving forward, what are, what are some of the steps IBM plans to take with New York City Public Schools to avoid these issues?
So again, we've detailed our plans for that short-term plan that is very specific, step-by-step directions that take into account both the technical changes, the behavioral changes, the communication plan that would need to make, take place if there was any kind of remote learning day. And we are working in collaboration with the DOE on what that long-term plan would look like. As councilmember said, obviously, the ideal is that we can all log in at one time, and that is certainly technically feasible. We just need to plan for that in the right way, and that would be that auto-scaling solution.
Yeah, absolutely, because I also mentioned there's some school who do staggered dismissals. They do staggered arrivals as well, and they really, they, they dismiss students a little earlier. So maybe we can look at that. Is there anything that the DOE testified today that you would characterize as inaccurate?
No.
Councilmember Shaker?
Thanks so much, Chair. Thank you for your testimony. I think one thing you testified, just to be clear, was that the day before the snow day, in, in preparation for it, the technical staff at DOT was in touch with your technical staff at IBM.
Yes.
Were you ever, as, as, you're a senior executive at IBM, right? Were you ever informed the day, or the days prior to the snow day, of the preparations for it?
No, I was not.
Were any of your colleagues at your senior level informed of the preparations?
No, they were not.
So it was essentially the, as you mentioned, the staffs who were actually operating the system through the technical aspects of it, but no one at a leadership level at the company were informed by anyone at leadership level by DOE of this issue?
Yes, that's correct.
And we had talked before, you had a bunch of testimony about the four hundred transactions per second. Do you think that is adequate for the current school population and given the amount of remote learning happening? Do you think that is an adequate number for a contract?
It's an interesting question. It certainly has been adequate many times. We have seen that volume change depending on a number of things as DOE expands their remote learning portfolio, which is great. They're offering more services that parents and teachers can take advantage of online. That, of course, changes the workload. So we can do our best to try to make sure that that workload is as efficient as possible. They have run at four hundred TPS in the past. They've also run at fourteen hundred. The issue really becomes a day like that where you try to get a million people on in a very short window. So I think that if we are going to plan for additional remote learning days where that is the plan, then absolutely not four hundred TPS is not adequate, and we would need to move to that auto-scaling solution.
Right, and that, that's really what I was getting to as well, was, you know, understanding that four hundred TPS works on some days, and then it's going to need to be adjusted based on other days. You know, I think it, it, it seems that where the contract is right now, I guess let's put it, the question to you this way. If the contract allowed for a greater TPS, if there was a different TPS number contracted for a much higher one of transactions per second, rather than the four hundred now that's been in place in twenty, since 2018, and you're adjusting based on, you know, the, the load, the frequency, snow days, if you had a contract with a larger amount or, or auto-scaling, would we have seen the problems that we saw on February thirteenth?
If we had a contract with the auto-scaling, no, we would not have seen those issues. What they have is a custom off-the-shelf available product that comes with that four hundred TPS ceiling. So it would be that either they would go to the auto-scaling solution, or they would need to change behavior to be at the four hundred TPS.
Got it. So this wasn't some sort of customized for DOE? This was an off-the-shelf product that DOE had?
The auto-scaling solution would be customized for DOE.
I see. And so with an auto-scaling contract in place, even if you didn't, you may, this, you may not have had these issues at all, but even if you did, would IBM have to troubleshoot better to address that issue with an auto-scaling contract than with the four hundred transaction per second contract?
Absolutely.
And my final question is, what would you say, as part of senior leadership at IBM, was your biggest frustration that day, that morning, when the system was failing?
Of course, the biggest frustration is for the parents and the families, the students, the teachers. I'm a mom myself. I know what that does to your already very busy day. Nobody at IBM was happy to see that. That said, knowing the partnership we have with the city of New York and how seriously and personally we take it, knowing that we really had done everything we can to make sure that this technology was working above and beyond what it was contracted to do, hearing it be summarized as an IBM technology problem was, of course, frustrating. That said, I really am very optimistic and encouraged by the partnership with DOE over the past few weeks, and I'm, I'm very confident that not only are we going to avoid this from happening again, but that we are going to work together to find the right solution that our families deserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
To follow up on what Councilmember Shaker said, to expand this contract, what's the estimated cost?
I can't speak about costs in a public forum, but I will get back to your office on that, Chair Joseph.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for testifying. On the, sorry to harp on this, but like on the messaging issue, on the, the, just the sequence of contact, in those instances, did they seem, I guess, was the tone urgent? Like, hey, alert? Because I feel the announcement they made on February twelfth about a snow day was earlier than I've ever seen the department do in the past, right? And I went to school here. So was the tone urgent? And if that had been the case, would even then a notification on the twelfth? Because it sounds from your testimony that it was kind of very casual, like, we might, we might do remote learning, which to me, it sounds contrary to what was testified here, and certainly doesn't sound urgent. But had that been the case, would that given, would that have given IBM enough time to then accommodate to, to switch for what you needed to prevent what happened?
I think certainly, had we communicated at the right levels, we could have improved the outcome, yes.
Okay, and was the tone definitive? Okay. And was the tone definitive on that February 12th notification?
Notification said we may have a fully remote day, and can you please keep an eye on the TPS?
And in a scenario where it had been more definitive and you'd made accommodations, and in fact, there was no need for remote learning, would there have been any impact at all? Like, had you been over-prepared and there not have been remote learning?
Again, I think DOE and IBM agree on this. I think ideally, we would have been planning way before the day before. I think we would have been a part of the simulations, a part of the planning, and we would have been able to better advise the DOE on potentially staggering start times, what we could do to ensure that the system could handle the load.
Yeah, thank you. I think what we're all, we're all in agreement. We don't want to go back. We want to see better practices moving forward. But we're always going to emphasize transparency and better communication. And it was encouraging to hear that they're taking responsibility, but that really sounds like what is at the crux of kind of how everything rolled out. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And again, we have a very strong communication plan in place and documented with DOE now.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Joseph.
Thank you for your testimony. We will now turn to our next panel. Natasha Kidoga, Molly Senak, Kesey Gordon, Aracelis Lucero, Ellen McHugh. Please make your way to the front table. Natasha, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Joseph and members of the Education Committee for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Natasha Kidoga, and I am Director of Education Policy and Inside Schools at the New School Center for New York City Affairs. For 20 years, Inside Schools has served as a vital resource for millions of families throughout their children's K-12 education by serving as the one-stop shop where New York City families, including immigrant families and newly arrived migrant families living in temporary housing, can better understand New York City Public Schools. During the pandemic, Inside Schools supported families to navigate online learning and produce several reports on the well-documented digital divide and solutions to equitable remote learning for all children. Data shows that remote learning during the pandemic further increased inequities for our most vulnerable students. Low-income students of color in New York City experienced almost twice the learning loss of their white peers after the pandemic. And students in poverty were chronically absent at a rate of almost twice as high as their peers from families above the poverty line. However, the digital divide remains for the city's most vulnerable students as displayed during the most recent transition to remote learning on February 13. Families who struggled to access the internet and devices during the pandemic don't necessarily have access now. And there are an additional 36,000 newcomer students living in temporary housing who didn't experience remote learning during the pandemic in New York City and are unfamiliar with the devices, software, and protocol used. While some students were loaned tablets by their schools for the remote snow day, logging in was still a challenge. Many families struggled to log in despite waking up at 5:00 AM in preparation, and they encountered error messages and lagging connections. 23% of the parents we surveyed said their children were unable to participate in remote learning that day. Some parents relied on help from other parents to eventually connect later in the day. These challenges are compounded for newly arrived migrant children living in temporary housing. Wi-Fi is notoriously slow and unreliable in shelters. Children have limited access to computers or any device, and parents are unfamiliar with DOE technology platforms. Inside Schools has helped many parents create MySchools accounts and even email accounts. We also met a few moms who don't have a cell phone. For these parents, how are they supposed to connect with a school or other parents if they have trouble logging in? These challenges also impact the effectiveness of school communication with the most vulnerable families. Many families we help in shelters were unaware they had to apply to middle or high school. If parents don't know about this, an effort that DOE and schools spend months to share info and has translated into multiple languages, how can they find out about remote learning on such short notice or get support the day of? The environmental conditions of children who lived in overcrowded households and in temporary housing further amplifies the disadvantage. Struggling to concentrate on an online lesson is even harder in a small hotel room with your siblings and parents. English learners face the additional challenge of navigating a remote learning system ill-equipped to support their needs. Families need the technology as well as instructions and day-of technical support on how to connect so their children can access remote learning. Beyond access and infrastructure, schools and teachers need sufficient support and professional development to teach effectively online. A sudden snow day does not allow for adequate lesson planning. Some parents also reported that their children's teachers were unable to log in. Funding to support school and shelter-based staff to better support immigrant students and students living in temporary housing is also critical in ensuring equitable education. In addition to funding for culturally and linguistically responsive CBOs that can more effectively support our immigrant children when the system fails to do so. We urge DOE to share their plan in developing future remote learning days and more effectively supporting the city's most vulnerable families. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Molly?
Hi. My name is Molly Senak, and I am testifying on behalf of Center for Independence of the Disabled New York. So both disabled and non-disabled students obviously had a lot of trouble attending class virtually on February 13. However, the school day does not stop once you log on. That is not automatically a successful school day just because you are technically able to attend. Students with disabilities face a unique issue when it comes to remote learning. A student with an IEP is entitled to related services such as speech therapy or occupational therapy, and sometimes those services are not offered remotely. According to a citywide council on special education survey that they sent out the week of this snowstorm, 27% of students enrolled in a District 31 through 32 school did not receive all of their related services remotely on February 13, nor did 36% of students who were enrolled in a District 75 school. In order to count as, and that just means that they could have only received a service, if that, in order to count as receiving some of their services. So those numbers are unfortunate, not only because students missed out on supports that actively helped them engage in their learning, but because this issue was not unexpected. In the 18 months that New York City Public Schools incorporated some form of long-term remote learning into class schedules, tens of thousands of students missed out on their mandated services, resulting in the filing of a federal class action complaint, ZQ versus the NYC DOE, by Advocates for Children against both the city and the state Departments of Education. So that complaint not only states that children were not necessarily receiving technology and their services, it also says that they were not provided with compensatory services in a timely manner. So this complaint was initially filed in November of 2020, and its 2022 dismissal was reversed in 2023. So the DOE cannot say that it did not anticipate challenges in providing students with disabilities the supports they are entitled to remotely. Investments need to be made in providing resources for families whose children might face additional struggles with learning remotely. So these include finding alternatives or compensatory options for mandated services that require a physical presence, like occupational therapy, providing more interpretation services, and investing in more hiring in special education in general so that existing shortages of instructors and providers of related services are not further exacerbated by a change in a learning environment. If a pivot to remote learning in emergencies like a snowstorm is going to be the standard for New York City public education, figuring out how to provide related services remotely has to be as much of a priority as figuring out the technical issues that prevented students from logging on in the first place, because both issues prevent students from being able to participate in their own education. And students with disabilities are less likely to have that lost time made up to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Kesey Gordon?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Chair Joseph and members of the Education Committee. My name is Casey Gordon, and I'm the Senior Manager of Education Policy at the New York Immigration Coalition, NYAC. The NYAC is an umbrella policy and advocacy organization for more than 200 groups serving immigrants and refugees across New York State. With over 30 years of experience in education reform, the NYAC's Education Collaborative has been the forefront, has been at the forefront of improving the quality of public education for New York City English-language learners and immigrant students. We're here today to address a matter of great concern that became glaringly evident during the recent Remote Learning Day, the city's unpreparedness for a full transition to remote learning. Despite early announcements to switch New York City Public Schools to remote learning, administrators did not account for potential technical challenges. This particularly impacted 36,000 immigrant children living in temporary shelters and those in need of translation services. Remote learning exposed the longstanding digital divide for immigrant students. And Ls and students in temporary housing have often have limited access to computers, reliable internet, and necessary language services to navigate online learning. Immigrant students and Ls are still facing compounding barriers to accessing remote learning while being expected to show up and perform at the same level as their peers. New York City Public Schools claimed to have conducted tests to ensure the functionality of remote learning systems prior to making the decision to conduct instruction online on February 13. However, these tests did not encompass the scalability required for a system-wide remote day, and over 20% of students were unable to access their remote classes. And while this might seem like a small percentage of students, this number could represent some of the most vulnerable students already at risk of interrupted learning. New York City Public Schools failed to properly prepare parents to ensure their children had the necessary equipment to meaningfully participate in virtual classrooms. And at the same time, New York City Public Schools did not account for the fact that parents would need to arrange for childcare for that day. And these disparities are worse for families living in temporary shelters. And it is well-known that there are higher rates of apathyism for immigrant students from low-income households. Making sudden changes without the proper preparation for both schools and students makes it more difficult to continue participation. This situation is far from acceptable and falls short of the standards set for supporting children and families during uncontrollable interruptions such as snow days. The recent failures in remote learning show that while some changes have been made, there has not been much progress towards equitable approaches for immigrant students. And while New York City Public Schools aim to continue instruction for students, we must ensure that all students have access to instructions, especially those who need additional support, both in and outside of the classroom. And along with ensuring that families have the proper resources and support to transition to remote learning days, the city must invest $500,000 in comprehensive high schools with large number of immigrant students to receive professional development and best practices on how to welcome and best serve immigrant and asylum-seeking students. And I have more recommendations for the city that I'll submit in my written testimony. But the city can take these steps to help families transition to remote learning and help immigrant families gain access to tools and services needed for integration. And this will require investment, not cuts, for immigrant and Native students alike to excel even in extreme circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Aracelis Lucero?
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon, and thank you so much, Chair Joseph and the members of the Education Committee for this opportunity to testify. My name is Aracelis. I'm the Executive Director of MASA. We're a community-based organization that's based in the South Bronx who has over two decades of experience serving recently arrived immigrants and Indigenous communities, providing them with critical services around education, family wraparound support services, and advocacy and leadership opportunities. We serve a population that is often considered hard to reach, led mostly by parents who are undocumented. Nearly a third of our parents have less than a primary school education, and two-thirds less than a secondary school education. Over a third speak an Indigenous language such as Misteco, Nahuatl, Kichuah, Wolof, Mam, to name a few. And the majority have an annual income of $30,000 or less. 55% of our families actually have no income at all. Parents in this community, and by extension, the beautiful children under their care, face significant barriers to achieve social and economic stability, limiting their ability to fully integrate in our society. However, we have witnessed time and time again how language barriers, the digital divide, and varying degrees of literacy levels impacts immigrant parents and how they do not receive the information they need to properly support, advocate for, and be empowered to be their children's first teacher as they have every right to be. A clear example, as we all have heard today, was the lack of preparedness of our public education system to provide equitable access to quality education for all of our students, including just the basic assurance of day-to-day learning. We clearly saw that even though there were attempts to prepare families and children for remote learning, there has existed massive gaps in communication and adequate support, especially for immigrant families, to ensure that them and their children have the proper tools and knowledge to continue with their learning. I have a higher degree. I'm technologically savvy. I made a valiant effort that day to try to log in. Just like you, I was scrambling. I had to give my child my work computer because Zoom wasn't working. On his iPad, had to reset, and we really couldn't get on until after 45 minutes of rebooting and trying to triage. So I can only imagine what our immigrant families were experiencing. And we did get word from our families that many of them were facing challenges. A lot of them didn't know how to log in, understood what was expected for them during that day. I myself had to not work the whole day just to like print out assignments. And so again, with all the challenges that our immigrant families and students in temporary housing have, it's really unfair that we were just that ill-equipped, and this is not like recent. So we have three recommendations. Immigrant families deserve to know their rights in schools, to have dedicated technological support, and to have access to culturally and linguistically competent staff who can help them navigate our massive school system. We should especially ensure Indigenous speakers and speakers of other languages less commonly spoken are not forgotten, which is very often the case. While this ideally should live within the schools, the experience of culturally competent CBOs who have already been engaged in this work should be leveraged. An additional funding should be provided to increase their capacity to support newcomer and immigrant families. A funding stream that I would like to emphasize on is the $4 million allocation from City Council to the DOE for immigrant family communications, which we should just review and make sure that we understand how that money is being used and how it's supporting our families. I'd also like to advocate for fully restoring funding to our 3K and pre-K programs and just better supports for immigrant children and families. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Ellen McHugh?
There isn't much left to say, is there? However, given the opportunity, we all take the chance. My name is Ellen McHugh. I've been an advocate for individuals with special needs for a number of years. I currently have a grandchild who is autistic. My son is deaf. My experience with remote education has been limited on my own side because of the separation between school and families. The biggest issue for me and for the children that were being, the children with disabilities that were being taught is the lack of expertise on the part of staff and the use of accessibility programs that are already loaded onto computers. In many cases, the computers that were given to the children who have disabilities did not allow the children to access the disability programs that are on there, including questions read aloud, large-size print, other things that I know I wrote down and can't remember. But the point is that I think we have a tool to use to find out about training. At the schools, there's something called a special education team, separate from the IEP team. It's part of a new deal with the union and the Department of Ed. Those teams are supposed to meet to discuss implementation. Having said that, there's no real plan. It's very vague. One of the things that might be helpful is to suggest to that team that they use this time to train their staff. And in Local Law 27, then track the training of staff members or track the training of family members. The DOE currently uses Beyond Access as an outreach for families to give them information, especially about special education. That is certainly a tool that can be used to inform families about not only their rights as family members who have students with disabilities, but also the use of specific types of implements to increase the child's understanding and knowledge gain. There are also UDL methods, universal. There are also UDL methods, universal, universal learning methods that can be implemented in classrooms prior to the-- any kind of break because of any kind of emergency, whether it's COVID or a snow day. The unfortunate part is that the history of what happened during COVID did not translate into implementation as the new staff and new students came in. This is a constant issue with the Department of Ed. Everything is by guess and by God, lurching from one to another to solve a problem immediately without plans for the future. Yes, that's not a nice thing to say. Having said it, it's been my experience that planning is not their strength. Thank you for the time, and thank you for being so patient to sit here on a rainy afternoon and listen to us.
You're welcome. As always, there's a lot of work to do. I had a quick question. So in your testimony, you said students with IEP, our students with special needs, our English language learners, they were not ser-- they didn't get their service that day, correct?
So we don't know the exact numbers yet, which the--
I did ask them. They said--
Yeah.
They'll get to me.
They don't know yet, so all of these numbers as of right now are based on a survey that CCSE sent out on their own. That survey is still technically open as of the last time I checked, which was last night. They've surveyed 753 parents of students with IEPs. I can also say that in meetings, in all of the CEC meetings for CCSE and for District 75, the topic of remote learning has come up a lot, and it's always, okay, we have to monitor whether or not our students are able to access their services remotely. And we-- there is very little information being provided to parents about how their-- how able their children are going to be to access these services. There is very little data following up on how-- how successfully these services were provided, because again, we're just looking at February 13th, so they're still collecting that data. But even if we look at just the 18 months of the pandemic and going in and out of remote learning, even that data is a little shaky, just because again, the standards for what qualifies as being provided with your services can literally be being provided one of your services that you are entitled to once. So if we say, like for instance, like in the 2021, 2022 school year, I think they said that 12% of students did not receive any mandated services, which is actually, technically speaking, a good number, but we don't know how many of those students received their services regularly, and how many students received all of their services regularly. We know that it's a problem regardless of whether they're learning in the classroom or if they're learning remotely. We know that there is a shortage. We know that there is a tremendous backlog of IEP cases and people waiting for compensatory services. We know how much money is being spent on Carter cases because families cannot act-- their children don't have access to the services they need in public schools, and all of those factors are compounded by remote learning. And there are certain things like physical therapy. How are you supposed to offer physical therapy remotely? That's something that we need to figure out, if that is going to become the standard every time that school shut down. You can't say that school continues for some students but not others. That's not-- that's not fair and equitable education. And then it also comes down to, as my colleagues are talking about, interpretation services for parents and families who don't speak English. That's everything everyone said. Already enormous issue for navigating this system, but especially if your students are-- need additional help, and you are being expected to provide that help, and you cannot interpret what this-- what your child's instructor is saying in order to help your child. What are you supposed to do? You know, this is the federal complaint I mentioned is not the only lawsuit regarding remote learning and IEP services that has been filed. There's another lawsuit about missed early intervention services for that reason. It was a little girl whose family, she missed the majority of her mandated services while in, I believe, pre-K. And one of the issues was that her family, English was not their first language, and their teachers kept saying like, hey, you know, she had trouble sitting still in front of a screen, and all of the instructions from the teacher to-- that could have potentially aided the child in receiving her education. There was no interpreter provided. The mother couldn't help her child. You know, that's obviously not what we want.
We saw that during COVID. It was a huge issue, and ACS usually gets involved as well. A lot of ACS cases were brought against our families, especially our ENL families. So I'd firsthand. And we do have someone here from New York City Public Schools. He is taking notes to carry back on how we can better, especially Beyond Access as well, how we can improve the systems, and how do we improve agencies talking to each other, service providers talking to each other, so we can have a better plan for our New York City kids? So that's very important.
Local Law 27 already exists, and it already collects information on the lack of services for students with special needs. So in many cases, there is something to start with prior to any questions. There are anywhere between 1,000 and 1,400 little ones who are not receiving services. We know this already. So I think while collecting information and collecting stories is important and certainly illustrates the problem, we do have a lot of information to proceed with. I think we let the DOE off the hook by cons-- this is an opinion, by constantly researching the same information over and over. I also question the DOE's intent on this. It's as if they figure, well, what the hey, we'll get some time because we don't have the information. A few years back, the DOE went to Australia and came back with a reading program. The reason I brought this up is because Australia, because of the great distances in their stations, their sheep stations, they cannot have schools. A large number of their children, a large number of their children are totally educated online. If you take a look at some of Australia's curriculum and actual functioning with these online students, I think it would be a very enlightening episode for the Department of Education to at least, online, learn about what Australia is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to our final in-person panel. We will now move on to virtual testimony. Again to our--
Thank you.
Again to our virtual panelists. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first online panel, Tanisha Grant, followed by Naquan McLean. Tanisha Grant, starting time.
Hello, I'm here.
You may begin.
Okay, so here we go. Hello, my name is Tanisha Grant. I am the Executive Director of Parents Supporting Parents in New York City. Technology does not replace communication and family engagement with parents. The Department of Education has taken an approach of putting important information online. We must keep in mind that all parents-- Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. We must keep in mind that all parents and students, and as we see, we must keep in mind for that, that all parents and students cannot access that. As we see, remote learning on February 3rd, in February was a disaster. This is an issue that parents and students are-- We heard DOE say today that they have provided two million devices. That's funny, because our community-based organizations are still giving out devices to students with their own computers and printers, high-quality too. We don't do Chromebooks or iPads. For too long, our students have been told they aren't good enough to have their own laptops, and that's wrong. All our children deserve digital access in a closely responsive, holistic way. I want to say that there has been no real effort since 2020 to build a good learning system online. This is not the only piece. Children like my son are being enrolled in online college classes at school like Eagle Academy with no communication with parents and no in-school support. This is setting our children up to fail. We urge our Child Education to continue to hold the Department of Education responsible and accountable for the horrible leadership sustained by the Department of Education on the topic of remote learning. Parents Supporting Parents New York will continue in our own way to support our students and give as many students as we can their own high-quality laptops and printers. We will continue to-- we will continue to advocate for Wi-Fi and internet access to all-- for all our students and families. I want to say that I am appalled to hear the mayor blame the failings of remote learning on parents. The students and families of New York City deserve more, much more, and we deserve a real apology for his comments on that remote day. That's the end of my testimony, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our final panelist, Naquan McLean, or Francesca. If you are logged on to the Zoom and would like to testify, please use the raised hand feature. Not seeing any hands. That concludes our virtual testimony, and we have one more in-person panelist, Paulette Healy. Please make your way to the front table.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Paulette Healy. I'm a member of the District 75 community and a disability advocate, raising two children with disabilities, one of them being a District 75 student in high school. I am submitting written testimony with a lot more data than I will present to you today, but I did want to amplify just a few things. The digital gap that was existed-- that was in existence in New York City with our families, it hasn't gone away. So when we're talking about like having remote snow days, you know, the Wi-Fi-enabled laptops and Chromebooks that were given during the pandemic, those contracts have expired. So they're-- they're no longer Wi-Fi-enabled, and families who are struggling to either, you know, pay for Wi-Fi or pay for food on the table, that shouldn't be a decision that our families should be making today. And these are the kind of things that we need to continue fight for, to fight for when the DOE is looking to take a monolithic type of approach when it comes to climate control days that our children are not able to go to school. From a personal standpoint, my two children that were home that day, one of them was able to get on to remote learning no problem. The other child could not get on to save his life. And that's with constant contact with the school administration and trying to get on, and 1,200 children from my children-- from my child's high school were not able to participate, you know, on that day. And quite honestly, they shouldn't have had to. Like, it was a snow day. They should have gone out and gotten on sleds and had snowball fights, because that's what they should be celebrating when we have snow, you know, that's abundant enough for us not to send our children to school. I also wanted to resonate the sentiment from the previous panel. Language access needs to be an additional component. I think that when-- if this is the direction that we are going to take, we need to put into policy that students with IEPs, their IEPs need to be read in the beginning of the year, and that consent for teletherapy should be sent in the beginning of the year in anticipation of particular snow days that may happen, occur, you know, that may occur throughout the year. If we do it in the beginning and we don't need to use it, that's fine. It doesn't go anywhere. But if we are scrambling to try to like get consent the day before a snow day happens, children are not going to get their services. And when we're talking about services, that includes adaptation of material on Google Classroom. You know, if we're going to provide it in the classroom on a smartboard, you know, with the different applications that are utilized, or have the child with their assistive technology device in the classroom, then posting a worksheet on Google Classroom is not going to serve us our children with IEPs. It's not going to serve us our children who are not English speakers. And quite honestly, it shouldn't take three people to help one parent get a child logged on to Google Classroom because they don't speak English. So thank you so much for the time, and thank you so much for having this hearing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Noted.
Thank you so much for your testimony. If there is anybody else who wishes to testify in person, please make your way to the sergeant and arms desk in the back. That concludes our in-person testimony.
And this concludes our hearing. Thank you.